The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, February 23rd, 2023.
I don't know where to go. We'll call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe you have an invitation from the pastor.
Let us pray. Father, I thank you for this time. As this city council is about to open, I pray, Father, for your wisdom in directing these council members that are here. I thank you for them and their willingness to serve this community. We thank you, Father, for this moisture that we are receiving, but maybe we're a little tired of it, but it's absolutely needed. And you're washing this dry area with this moisture. We thank you for that. Father, I pray for all your recruits to be taking place here and that proper decorum will take place as well. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you.
You need some help. You can help me when you're ready.
Mayor Robinson?
Present.
Councilman Carson?
Here.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Here.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Here.
Councilwoman Albert Isdakson tonight. Councilwoman William Weber?
Present.
Here.
City Clerk Lee?
Here.
City Treasurer H.R. Berner-Trust?
Here.
City Attorney Kuhun?
Here.
Public Works Supervisor Frank Kraft?
Here.
City Fire Chief Stork?
Here.
City Police Chief Amorim?
Here.
City Building Official Peterson?
Here.
And that is all. My end.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we move on to public comments. Please state your names for the record. You have 30 minutes. Please remember the first public comment is for items pertaining to agenda items. Do you have other public comments to make? That'll give you the reasons why you can talk to public comment.
City Engineer Albert is also present.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. For the record, I am Caroline MacIntosh. I serve as the Chairman of the White Pine County Tourism and Recreation Board and Chairman of the White Pine Main Street Association. I am here this evening to voice my opposition to the agenda items to abandon Avenue E. White Pine County Tourism and Recreation was recently selected as one of the six communities in Nevada for a Destination Development Grant. The focus of the grant application was to create a connected community. Abandoning a city street is the exact opposite of what we are trying to accomplish in connecting our community's assets and attractions. It makes even less sense when the purpose of abandoning the street is to open a Daddies Casino without meeting the 50-room lodging requirement. From a tourism perspective, we need more lodging to accommodate the increase in visitors. In 2021, visitor spending in White Pine County was almost $51 million, as reported by Travel Nevada. Fifteen percent of our local workforce is attributed to the hospitality industry, as reported by Dr. Fred Steinman from UNR's College of Business. We have a goal of diversifying our local economy. A connected community with additional lodging will help increase visitors and visitor spending. A standalone casino without lodging will not increase visitors or visitor spending. Yesterday, we were informed that Ely was named as number two in the 150 best small towns in America by Family Destination Guide. The caption read, "A picturesque and historic town nestled in the heart of the Great Basin, offering a unique blend of adventure and nostalgia." This is a great honor and tribute to the joint efforts of many, including the City of Ely, White Pine County Tourism and Recreation, Nevada Northern Railway, volunteer organizations that host events, Great Basin National Park, White Pine County, local businesses, and many other groups and individuals. The City of Ely is a strong partner in supporting local tourism and recreation. Closing an existing street negates the goal of a connected community, seeking to diversify our economy through increased tourism. Thank you for your consideration of rejecting the Avenue E abandonment proposal. And here is the article that came out with us as number two out of 150. It's quite an honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other vote, huh? No, please do. Okay, thank you.
My name is Sandy Moreno, and I live at 795 East Eighth Street. Our property is right on the edge of the potential development. What the lady was talking about with Avenue E, I think she doesn't quite understand that part of the reason for closing Avenue E is to make the two parcels or the two separate areas that are split by Avenue E more cohesive, to make, I think, the elevation change is what is going to affect Avenue E. I'm really looking forward to have something new in this town, something that isn't, what we say, locally owned. If some of the local businesses are opposed to the new development, I think it's kind of their own fault. We've been coming here since 2011, and I don't know how many times we've been unable to go out to eat, go to dinner. Motels, I hear you thought about a 90-room motel coming in, so that should ease the motel situation. You have a lot of empty motels, buildings, restaurants now. Nobody is stepping up to come fix them up and bring them up to code. And the buildings here, I've heard comments about them being historic. Nobody's interested in fixing them up. They're not going to be fixed up. And you don't make a move on doing this new development where there will be, right now currently it's a Starbucks. Everyone else keeps saying a casino. It's not just a casino. There's a restaurant, a non-local restaurant that might be interested in being opened on holidays, weekends, summer days. When you're traveling, it's really hard to get up in the morning in this town early and hit the road. You have to do it without breakfast. There's only two places in town, and you have to take a breakfast early in the morning. And if you want to attract tourism, I think something like that would also add to the value of the town as being a local site for tourists. Avenue E, there's not a lot of traffic coming out. We live right there. So I don't think it's going to affect tourism if they have to drive 200 feet further and turn down another road and use another road. And it's not going to hurt the local people to drive actually 200 feet from the highway to use another road. And I don't think most people will do it. They're too lazy. They will stay on the highway now. And I'm just really for the project. It's time to move on. It's time to do some updating. And I think if you tell this developer, "No, we don't want your business," I think it's going to send a signal out to the other developers that might be interested in coming here. They put a lot of time and effort into figuring this out, and no one else has been willing to buy all of this property. They're buying all of the junk property. Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Wait.
My name is Jim Ramsey. I'm the primary owner of the property in question on item one. I'm 81 years old. My wife is 76, and the motel is over 80 years old. I don't want another vacant building in this town any more than you guys do. We've already got four vacant motels. I think it's time for me to step aside and my motel to step aside in favor of something new and improved. And hopefully, we won't have to build any more roads or highways to do it. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey.
I'm Todd, we're Director of Tourism for Ely and White Pine County. My comments are regarding the proposed development White Pine West being considered tonight. Since I've been here, our office has been a driver of positive change in this community, and no one can accuse us of being anti-growth or anti-progress. In fact, together with many of you, I'm working on projects that promote pro-business community and planned and sustainable growth. I'm very excited to see that attention is being cast on this particular intersection. This high-profile area could definitely play a much more major role in contributing to our economy. But I am concerned, though, about a particular proposed business that is asking the city council to engage in some creative interpretation of one of its own ordinances. An ordinance that creates equity in the local business environment and improves the revenue stream of room taxes to the city copper. I've read the code requiring 50 rooms for any gaming property with more than 15 machines, and to me, it's very clear what the intention is.
I don't mean to step on your comments there, but the agenda item is just about the abandonment. If you want to address the 50-room issue, I think that'll be another agenda item for the final public comment. We'll just say we'll be back to that. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Stephanie Lomond. My cousin and father-in-law, oh, no, great, last factor, I told you earlier, we're all just on the road. We are here to urge you to vote against any kind of road abandonment for this project. I know you guys have a lot in your plates. I know there's a lot going on in the community, and I think that everyone on all sides of this can agree that we want to support the town. We want to clean things up. We want to jazz up these corners. It's important for all of us, it's important for our families, and it's important for the next generation of kids coming up in town. But we also have to look at the bigger picture, and I understand there are things that we can't talk about at this meeting, but we can speak to the tip of the iceberg on what tonight's vote can open Pan West's box to. I know there's been a lot of talk that the Daddies is not, and I've seen this really prominent, shaking his head, saying it's not, but I think it's important that before we take any kind of vote, we know exactly who's going to be leasing this for Pine West, and we need to know exactly what's going on. We can't abandon roads in our town and have people move from their homes in the middle of the housing crisis for some developer out of Texas. Pine West, they can't even answer questions at our council meetings. I think it's important to find out exactly what we're getting into here. I think it's important to have all the facts, and I think it's very important to continue to support local families, local homeowners, and the local businesses in town that help a lot of families get a paycheck and put food on the table. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, George Chad just speaking with a private citizen and not in any capacity. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda item 620, you consider a possible vacation of Pan West Road easing. This item was improperly noticed and passed by the RPC. What they approved was a 280-foot-long by 80-inch portion of Avenue E between blocks 29 and 32. This item needs to be denied for improper location and sent back to the Regional Planning Commission. The Nevada Over Meeting Law states the agenda item must be specific and does not allow for so-called typos. The public is deemed misled. Pine West holding is not the property owner in question, and there is no evidence that any of the property owners have appointed or authorized in writing. Pine West only to speak on their behalf on this issue. There's only affidavits that they are the owners of the property, the original owners, not Pine West. The City of Ely Streets and Alley Abandonment Criteria states if the answer to any of these questions is yes, then the roadway should not be abandoned, in particular, questions one, two, and three, and in particular, question five, possibly, but we don't know. The answer has not been given. NRS 268.512 to 268.568 inclusive states, a city may not, under NRS 268.512 to 268.568, assist any manufacturing, industrial, barhousing, or other commercial enterprise or any organization for research and development located within the City of Ely or within 10 miles of the city, which would compete substantially with an enterprise or organization already established in the city or the county, in the city. So, okay, we have numerous businesses that are going to be affected, and yet here you are assisting one individual business. You don't have a proper property owner that's representing the whole property. It's a baby. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda item 6.2, you consider a possibility for abandonment of road or amusement abandonment is 280-foot long by 20 wide of the roadway does not pass criteria to just by the request. The City of Ely Street now abandonment criteria states if the answer to any of these questions is yes, then the road abandonment should be banned, should not be abandoned, in particular, again, on your form, question one, two, and three, and question five and six. Again, Pine West holding is not the property owner. There's no evidence that any of the actual property owners have appointed or authorized in writing. Pine West only to speak on their behalf on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
My name is Benjamin Morena, and I just want to say that as far as Avenue E is concerned, there isn't all that much traffic there anyway, and as far as the beautification or whatever place we hold nationally as far as the city is concerned, the beauty of the small cities, there is nothing, no beautiful qualities about Avenue E that would make one go off the highway and go down the avenue and say, "Oh, how beautiful this is. Oh, how nice this is." What we want to do is progress. We want to move forward, make the city actually beautiful, do something that's going to benefit the city. When is the next opportunity going to come up to do anything with any of those properties? 50 years? Is it going to be a nice sort for the next 50 years? You know, nothing will come to be built upon, nothing. What other developer would come in? I don't know. It would be a good idea to close Avenue E just because of the grain that they're going to have to do in order to make it, like my wife said, cohesive, a good cohesive situation. So, anyway, I'm a little nervous, that's why I'm up in the air. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any other public comment? Carrying in saying that you will close public comments and move on to item three. Discussion for possible action approval of agenda, including renewal of agenda items. All in the same motion on this? I'll approve. Motion from Councilman Carson, item second.
I'll second.
Second from Councilwoman Elliott. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carry this to order. I enforce the Department of Reports. I still require.
You have to report what you have to report.
Okay. Please. Thank you. Mr. Court Judge?
Good evening, sir. I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Judge Carson. Set your terms. Okay. Set your votes.
I submitted a letter in opposition to AB 95 to Nevada Assembly Committee on Legislative Operations and Elections to make. This bill would require all local candidates for public office to submit petitions of candidacy. The CBG income surveys for Raleigh Avenue and for Stevens Orison only had a 50% response rate, so it didn't qualify as a median income, and we weren't able to apply for those grants to share. Hopefully, we can get those projects done another way. Complaints, the city has sent out 45 failure charter of snow letters to property owners so far, 32 applied. And lanes administered, assistant cop prepared 97 intent to lane letters, which I signed and had sent out February 3rd, seven recipients have paid their account in full, and six have paid the monthly fee.
Okay. Any questions? City Treasurer? City Public Works Supervisor?
Well, I finally get to tell you that our rebuilt public motor will be up tomorrow morning.
You said that before.
Tomorrow morning, 10:00, actually. That's our oil pump for the dozer will be here tomorrow before the 17th of March. That should be up tomorrow morning. And then I wanted to give a big shout out to the Water Department. It was many weeks we've had a few broken water mains, and last night they're coming in. It's a little chilly, and it's quite a project. That's good. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. City Water Officer, you have to report. City Engineer?
No report.
He's here.
I was hiding back there. I think I said to you before, he's working in for Val in Central Ely. They did come back and had us modify one little form on there. In the past, Gene used to just come in here and we would just refer all those questions to the actual VA. Gene, Jessica's in there now, Jessica wanted to actually come actually fill those in, and so we got basically put us on the ballot. That's all in. And so, actually, City G is reviewing it now, based on the preliminary stuff, they're actually pretty happy about it, and in fact, I think they said they were going to use it as an example, and some of the trains down the road, so it's going to be a lot good. And so we should hear back from them here shortly, and then when we do, we can go complete with the Ponzi and the LMI stuff are complete, and we'll be ready to go. What Jennifer just said on our CBG projects, we're not able to proceed with our LMI areas this year. We've had some disagreement with our LMI areas. They've tried to change over the last several years, and so in our office, we're gathering the information where our older LMI areas are, because nothing has changed in my eyes to change those LMI areas. It's always been there. And so we're gathering all the information and try to go back in there and see if somehow we can get to reevaluate these LMI areas and get to deal with this Amorim. We're working on some improvements for public streets. We're applying for a tap grant, and also I think that will be one of our projects for potential of our real hearts projects. We're working on our Alton plans that we can have in then by June for this next public phase that will begin next, not this summer, but fall. So, we obviously got plenty of snow out there, so we're working with Mike to come in here. We want to put a little plan together for some of the show-off to try to do what we can and minimize any flooding that's going to come potentially as a strength of the structure. So, we're working together with Mike on that. Our landfill runoff ditch is complete, and that basically is hitting the street for contractors to bid on next week. Our catex exclusion is in for our central Ely sewer. We haven't heard back from that yet. And another thing that we're working on is, as discussed last night, there's going to be fire drivers on private property, so we're going to try to narrow down, figure exactly how many fire drivers that we leave on private property, which will be the first battle. I really don't know that.
Any questions? Thank you, BJ. Thank you. City Builder?
Nothing to report. I have to answer the question.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to item five, reports. City Council, Councilman William Sarper?
We are still monitoring the grant process for the things that we're hoping may open up the room or that's going to be due, I believe, February 28th. There have also been some dealings with who owns what property and the historic preservation documents and so forth. I've heard of first reading, so that's moving forward.
Right. It's time to go now.
Nothing to report.
Councilman Trump? No report? Councilman Trump? Nothing to report? Okay. I was able to spend a few days at the legislature last week lobbying for some of our bills, building with probably 10 legislators and some people in the governor's office going back this week. I was excited to read the article about us being the second-best town. I forget where, but there was 150 when we were number two, behind Hawaii, which is hard to beat.
Yeah.
I did as well, did it. So that was great to see. I think that's fine. If I brought that out for five minutes, you just brought it out in six. Since I can't, we'll move on to item E. Item sort of discussion, possible action only at the Ely City Council. We have a consent agenda, and what we have tonight are our bills from February 13th to 21st. Are there any questions on those? If there's not, I'll make the disclosure that my husband is a member of the U. Voluntar Cardi Cardinals. Some of those bills affect them. He doesn't give any special consideration, and it doesn't affect him in any special sort of way, and he'll go on anyway. So, there's my disclosure. Is there a motion on those?
No.
Motion from Councilman Carson, item second.
I'll second.
Second from Councilwoman William Sarper. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any public? Carry this to order. The new business, item one, Councilman Carson, discussion for possible action, review of employee and elected official feedback on draft city mission statement and subsequent city mission statement revisions with determination of next steps prior to the meeting.
Well, I must say, round two looks a lot better. I thought they'd get rid of their input. I don't know where we go from here. I kind of like number two myself, but I don't know. Anybody else have any suggestions, or you want to pick one?
I know there was some talk of possibly voting public area to take some info from the community on that before we finalize, which I think would probably be a good idea. I didn't get around to much of it.
I didn't hurry at all.
I think you should try to get as quick as possible. Should. I will move to take it to the level here. Okay. Go right to the second.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Elliott. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any public? Carry this to order. Item two, Councilwoman Elliott, discussion for possible action, requesting Mayor Robinson with the support of city staff and certain council members to prepare and give a stated city address in the course of NRS 266.1902A. Address to be given at the first of the council meeting in March and also submitted in early. This is something we did last year. As I mentioned, input on any special topics, anybody from the councillor staff would like to improve, I'm happy to do that. We give that to them. The first meeting in March gives me some time to... Actually, first meeting in March is actually our next meeting, isn't it? Would it be problematic to move that to the second meeting in March? No. Okay. I would request that if the council wished to do that, they would move that to the second meeting in March. So that will... Do we need to put this on the agenda like this every year, or do we just have a set date just so it's really important? I'd prefer the council has ports so that it's not just on that, that way they have something to put to it. I try to put it on my calendar, remind you, fast. You're right.
I'd like a comment.
Sure.
I think it was a great idea. I was pretty proud of what was put together and all the things that were said. I think it was a high spot, and a lot of times our citizens don't know anything that's going on or anything that's happening. It was well put together, it was eloquent and stated, and so I think that is something that we should do.
Is there a motion on second? So, I'm going to do it on the second meeting in March instead of the first meeting. Any motion from Councilman Carson, item second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilwoman William Sarper. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any public? Carry this to order. We're at 5:30, so we will back up to 5:06. The mayor will recess the regular city council meeting for a public debate at 5:30 on the following topics. We'll start with item one. Councilmembers, City Building Officer Peterson, public during the session only consideration of a petition for vacation or abandonment of the road or amusement by applicants. Representative of Pine West Holdings LLC are requesting that an approximate 280-foot length by 80-foot width portion of Avenue E between blocks 29 and 32 be vacated, abandoned, to accommodate a future commercial development. The applicants and the property addresses and/or general locations in Ely, Nevada are as follows. 466 East Seventh Street, 777 Avenue E, 701 East Faltman, and Avenue E Block 29. consideration of a petition for vacation or abandonment of a road or reason by applicants. Representative of Pine West Holdings, LLC, are requesting that an approximate 280-foot-length by 80-foot-width portion of Avenue E between blocks 29 and 32 be vacated, abandoned, to accommodate a future commercial development. The applicants and the property addresses and/or general locations in Ely, Nevada are as follows. 466 East Seventh Street, 777 Avenue E, 701 East Altman, and Avenue E Block 29. This is a public hearing, discussion only. We will be taking comments from the body present and on Zoom and the council.